Good evening. I would like to call the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals Tuesday, February 20th, 2024, meeting to order. The first call of business is the roll call.
Bruce Forster.
Here.
Craig Burrow.
Here.
Mike Pratt, it's not present. Rex Meyer.
Here.
Luke Phelan.
Here.
The second thing normally we do is approval of previous minutes, but there are none, so we will pass that. And we also normally motion to adjourn pursuant to this county board's vote on petitions, but since there are none, we'll pass that. And we'll move on to old business. Old business is petition number 23-P-1617 by Stewart Creek Solar LLC. In this petition, there are multiple permanent parcel numbers which are listed in the petition. I'm not going to read them all, but they're all within the petition. And so at this point, I would like to have a motion to turn the meeting over to our facilitator, Tim Zollinger.
So move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The meeting is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and welcome all of you that are here this evening. I know you're not here to listen to me, but you are here to listen to a public hearing and participate potentially in a hearing regarding this petition. So before we begin, I have a few comments and maybe structure to provide to everyone, sort of setting the stage, if you will, for this evening and for the next public hearing. As the chairman said, my name is Tim Zollinger. I am an attorney, a partner of law firm Ward, Murray, Pace, Johnson, and Sterling, and I do have the privilege of serving as the hearing facilitator for this petition. Petition being the one for Stewart Creek Solar Phase Two submitted by Hexagon Energy, 23P-1617, for a special use permit to develop Phase Two of a proposed solar energy system inclusive of a battery energy storage system or a BES. So let me describe my role for all of you that are present. My role is to facilitate the hearing and assist the board with considering the evidence and the relevant legal standards. I am not an advocate for the petitioner. I am not an advocate for the county. It is my job to be neutral, here to assist with the process, organization, and the flow of the proceedings. It is my job, however, to rule on any objections that might be made to the immisibility of information or evidence, but please understand the strict rule of judicial proceedings is not applicable, but in the event objections are made, they will be addressed as necessary. Certainly, we all carry cell phones, mobile devices, so if you could at least be so kind as to put those on airplane mode or silence them, it happens, but if we could do that to begin with, it would be appreciated. Proceedings tonight are being taken down by our court reporter. I would ask that all of you do your best to follow certain rules of decorum. It makes my job easier and definitely makes her job easier as well. If you are presenting or speaking, please talk clearly and in a manner that the reporter can hear you. Avoid gestures or head nods. They don't take down well on a transcript, and particularly if you're back at the podium, the head nod may not be as evident as you might think it is. While others are talking, please do not interrupt them or try to talk over them. Anyone that wishes to speak on this petition, in favor or against, will be given an opportunity to do so. If while you're speaking, I ask you to pause for a moment, please do so. There may be a point that I need to address, and then we'll get back to you. As I said, each party or person representing will be given an opportunity to speak, so please let the others speak without interruption. They will do their best, and I will require they do their best to afford you the same. In making any comments or offering any questions, you are expected to be respectful. Sometimes questions can be emotionally driven. I respect that, but at all times when you're asking a question, please make sure you do so in a respectful tone and respectful words. If you have a point of objection, that should be directed to my attention, not somebody else, not the other party or a member of the zoning board, please direct it to me, and we will address that in appropriate fashion. So I'd like to start with, for the record, having those present on behalf of the zoning board identify themselves. So let's start with you, Mr. Chairman.
Bruce Forster.
Craig Burrow.
Luke Phelan.
Rex Meyer.
Thank you very much. County officials that are present.
Alice Hinkle.
And your title, Alice?
Zoning Administrator.
Thank you.
Stephanie Sasser, Assistant State's Attorney.
Anyone else for the county?
Jonathan Hendrickson, Lee County IT.
On behalf of the petitioner, Ms. Kennedy, I'll start with you.
Courtney Kennedy, local counsel for the petitioner.
Scott Reamer, Senior Director of Development for Hexagon Energy.
Will Hansman, Senior Development Manager for Hexagon Energy.
And if there are any interested observers that wish to speak during the hearing, I'd ask that you introduce yourself as well, either for or against the petition. Anyone else present that wishes? Okay. Sir, we'll start with you on the far left.
K O E H L I N G.
Sir? You have to probably speak up. Others? Sir?
John Peterson.
And is the gentleman next to you going to speak as well?
I want to speak.
All right.
Sure. I don't know what you mean.
All right, that's fair. Anyone else? Okay. So this evening, in this public hearing and in any subsequent dates on which this hearing will be continued to, the process that we're going to follow, and I will give maybe an explanation or overview of that. In all cases involving petitions before the zoning board, the petitioner or the applicant has the burden of proof. But before we begin that phase, I'm going to ask the zoning officer to make introductory comments or statements. Once the zoning officer has done that, we'll proceed with the presentation of any witnesses or documents. Once the zoning officer goes through her explanation and maybe an overview of the documents and exhibits that have been submitted to the county, any questions that the zoning board members have can be asked of her. If they have no questions or they're completed, then we'll go to the petitioner. The petitioner can ask the zoning officer any questions that they believe to be relevant to this proceeding. If there are none or they complete their questions, we'll then proceed to those of you that identified yourself as interesting, interested observers, and the same process will be followed for you. Any questions on that? Each party, whether you're the petitioner or the, an interested observer, or the county, will be given an opportunity to make any opening remarks they wish or any closing remarks that they wish. And then at that point, we'll go on to, or after opening statements, we'll go on to the process, if you will. Because the petitioner has the burden of proof, they always get the last word. Any concerns or objections on the process? Record reflect, none. It is also my understanding the petition was filed after the time the relevant county board ordinance was amended, and so for purposes of this hearing, we'll be following the process and standards set forth in ordinance 2023-05-003. That ordinance provides in relevant part, under hearing factors, that the county board may approve a commercial solar energy facility, special use permit application, if it finds the evidence complies with state and federal law and regulations and with the standards of the zoning code, including the factors that I'm going to list. The factors are applied as a balancing test. Not each individual requirement has to be met. It's an overall balancing of whether or not the factors weigh in favor of granting the petition. These include: Establishment, maintenance, or operation of the commercial solar energy facility will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. The commercial facility will not be injurious to the uses and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair property values of surrounding properties. Establishment of the commercial facility will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding properties. Adequate public utilities, access roads, drainage, and/or necessary facilities have been or will be provided. Adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress designed to minimize traffic congestion on the public streets. The proposed facility is not contrary to the objectives of the current comprehensive plan of the county, if applicable. The commercial solar energy facility shall in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of this ordinance and the zoning district in which it's to be located, except as such regulations may, in each instance, be modified pursuant to the recommendations of and approved by the county board. Finally, the zoning ordinance does provide that the county board may stipulate conditions, guarantees, and restrictions upon the establishment, location, construction, maintenance, and operation of the commercial solar energy facility as deemed necessary for the protection of the public interest and to secure compliance with the standards or requirements of the Each session has, under the zoning board rules, a limit of two and a half hours. If it becomes necessary to take a break, please get my attention, and we'll see that we address the same. Any questions on the provisions and the ordinance or the process we are following? Hearing done. The record reflect the same. So anyone testifying this evening, whether you're a county official, the petitioner, or an interested observer, you'll be sworn in at the relevant time, and we're going to start this evening with the zoning officer and some general background.
You solemnly swear or affirm under penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about
Probably should, shouldn't it? It's okay. Before we start with the zoning officer, there are a number of individuals that are on the remote platform. If you wish to make known a desire to be, to comment as an interested observer, if you can show, can they do a hand raise on that? If you can raise your hand, so to speak, virtually, we'll see that we get you noted and at the relevant time, offer you that opportunity. Having said that, I see no hands being raised virtually. Is that accurate? The expert IT person to my left. One hand? Okay, so MGV will make note of that at the relevant time. Thank you to those that are on there virtually remotely. So would you state your full name, please?
Alice Hinkle.
And what is your position with the county?
Zoning Administrator.
And how long have you held that position?
Just over a month.
And prior to that time, how were you employed by the county?
I had, was employed as Renewable Energy Coordinator for the county for the three years prior to this position.
And during that three-year period, were you knowledgeable and understanding of the requirements of a petition for special use related to solar energy?
Yes.
And are you familiar with the petition filed in this case?
Yes.
Did you have any opportunity to review it?
Yes.
And is that part of your usual and customary duties?
Yes.
And did you review the petition in this case to determine whether all documents contemplated by the county code have been submitted?
Yes.
And have they been?
Yes.
And did you receive and have ready a number of documents on behalf of the county?
I do.
So can we go through those one at a time? You can pick the order and identify them.
The first exhibit I have is, it would be a group exhibit of the three petitions that we received, the zoning office received. Their initial filing that was received on October 6th. Their first amended petition, which was received by our office on November 3rd, and then the second amended petition that was received December 4th, 2023.
And we'll refer to those as ZO1, zoning office one. And Ms. Kennedy, we will have an exhibit list at the next hearing available. And the next one, Alice?
I have a copy, again, a group exhibit of the correspondences that went out to our county board, the Health Department, the County Highway Department, the County Soil and Water Conservation District, Alto Township Planning Commission, Willow Creek Township Planning Commission, Willow Creek Township Supervisor, Alto Township Supervisor, Willow Creek Township Highway Commissioner, Alto Township Highway Commissioner, Village of Lee Mayor, and Village of Stewart Mayor.
And so we'll identify that as ZO2. And next?
I have another group exhibit of the agendas that were posted with regards to this hearing. The one for January 4th, 2024 is the hearing date. It was posted on December 19th, 2023. There is an agenda that was for January 16th showing that the meeting was canceled as we did not, my office did not have the agenda posted in time to meet the requirements. I have the canceled meeting for February 1st. That agenda was posted on January 18th. And then the agenda for tonight's meeting, and that was posted on January 18th as well.
Refer to that as ZO3. And when the agenda was posted for this evening's meeting, where was that posted?
It was posted outside this courtroom on the bulletin board.
Is that the usual and customary place?
Yes.
Next?
I also have a copy of the notice that was posted at, out at, in the country. We posted signs notifying of the hearing. One sign was placed at the intersection of Stewart Road and McGur Road, and the second one was placed on County Line Road just south of the Village of Lee, across the street from the cemetery.
And that will be ZO4.
I have, or the next exhibit is, was received from the plaintiff, proof of notification, proof of notification that it was published in the Dixon Telegraph, as well as the certified mail receipts for the certified mail requirement.
Certified mail is sent for those that received a copy that are entitled to notice.
Correct. My next exhibit is the Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District's report, Natural Resources Information Report.
And that'll be ZO6.
I have the copy of the EMA that was supplied as part of the application.
Be ZO7.
And this, this EMA is specific to Phase Two. And that's all I have.
Is that all you have? Do the members of the zoning board have any questions regarding the zoning office?
No questions here.
Petitioner?
I just have one follow-up question. Ms. Hinkle, directing your attention to the proof and notification, I believe that's marked as ZO5. In addition to publishing in the Dixon Telegraph, did the petitioner also publish in the Ogilvy County Life?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. And that's included in that notification materials?
It is. I apologize.
Nope. Thank you. That's all.
Do any of the interested observers have a question based on zoning officer's testimony Hearing done. At some point, yes. So at this point, we will turn it over to the petitioner. Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you, everyone. As I introduced myself earlier, my name is Courtney Kennedy. I am here as local counsel for the petitioner, in this case, Stewart Creek Solar LLC. Also, as you know, with me tonight should be some familiar faces for the county. Scott Reamer, the Senior Director of Development with Hexagon Energy LLC, which what I will term as the parent company of Stewart Creek Solar, and we'll get into that later throughout this hearing. And then also with me is Will Hansman, the Senior Development Manager. As some of you may recall, Hexagon Energy appeared before the county back in 2020 for what we will refer to throughout the course of this hearing as Phase One of the project, that is, the Stewart Creek Solar project. Ultimately, in November of 2020, Phase One received a special use permit from the Lee County Board, and since then, both Will and Scott have appeared at various meetings before the county and actively participated in the Renewable Energy Committee's formation of the various drafts of the solar ordinance, regulating, or, excuse me, regulating commercial solar energy systems. While we're not here to discuss or reopen the hearing on Phase One of the project, we fully intend to provide you with an overview of what Phase Two looks like for this project and how Phase One will impact and factor into Phase Two of this project. So at a 50,000-feet view, on December 4th, 2023, Stewart Creek filed an amended petition for special use permit for approximately 3,493 acres of land situated in Willow Creek and Alto Townships, both in Lee County. This project will span across 68 parcels of land and involves approximately 19 landowners. This project is considered a 600-megawatt solar farm and also includes a 150-megawatt battery energy storage system, or what we'll refer to as a BES. Throughout the course of this hearing, you will hear testimony from Mr. Reamer and Mr. Hansman. Mr. Reamer's testimony will, for some of you, reintroduce you to Hexagon Energy as the parent company, again, of Stewart Creek and its various principles and experience in this industry. And then Mr. Hansman's testimony will walk you through the project specifics and particulars, and we will specifically address each one of the ordinance requirements regulating commercial solar energy facilities to show you how the project, as proposed, meets and complies with that ordinance. At the conclusion of this hearing, and after considering all of the evidence and testimony presented herein, it's my hope that you will agree with me that this project complies with the Lee County ordinance regulating commercial solar energy facilities, and further that you will recommend approval of Stewart Creek's petition to the Lee County Board. Thank you.
And your first witness?
Yes, I would like to call Mr. Scott Reamer.
Mr. Reamer, come on up and be sworn.
While he is standing up, I can hand out the physical copy of his PowerPoint presentation.
You solemnly swear or affirm under penalty of perjury that the testimony you're --
Yeah.
Sign your name and quote your name. And when you get up there, you'll state your name.
Thank you. Is that going to be on the screen then? Are you asking, are you just using it for demonstrative purposes? Yeah, let's just do that.
May I proceed?
Please.
Thank you. Can you please identify yourself for the record?
Indeed. Good evening, everybody. My name is Scott Reamer.
And how do you spell your last name?
R-E-M-E-R. Same forwards as backwards.
And tell us a little bit about your educational history.
Yeah, so my undergraduate degree was in civil engineering at George Mason University outside of Washington, DC. I graduated summa cum laude in 2010. I then earned a master's degree in the same field. I believe I finished that in 2011. After that, I went and did my PhD in systems engineering at the University of Virginia, which I completed in 2015. My topic of study was infrastructure and the role that infrastructure plays in human and community flourishing.
What is your current occupation, Mr. Reamer?
I'm currently a Senior Director of Development with Hexagon Energy.
And it's my understanding that you've prepared a brief PowerPoint presentation for tonight, is that correct?
Indeed, it is.
Okay. Did you personally prepare this?
I did.
And did you do so in anticipation of tonight's hearing?
I did.
Mr. Facilitator, I'd like to mark this as a demonstrative exhibit. We can just label it A, if you will.
You want to mark it petitioner, let's use numbers.
Okay.
Unless you have your others already marked.
Nope, I can roll with that.
So for demonstrative purposes, petitioner is exhibit one.
Okay. Please proceed with your presentation.
Excellent. Good evening, everybody. I'll try to keep this brief. Thank you, Attorney Kennedy. Thank you to everybody for being here to listen to us. I am somewhat of a familiar face, but for everybody who was involved in Phase One of Stewart Creek Solar, I might look a little different. That's because I'm not Matt Hansman, our founder and CEO. His plan was to be here tonight to walk everybody through this. Unfortunately, due to an injury, he has an operation tomorrow morning, so he couldn't join us, and I think, for the better across the board. But I hope that I can show and be a proper representative of our company. As Courtney mentioned, my name is Scott. I'm a Senior Director of Development at Hexagon Energy. I oversee all of our utility-scale solar projects across the country. I cut my teeth on this up in the Northeast, as well as projects down in the Deep South and here in the Midwest. Give me a moment here. Yeah, just very excited to present this proposal tonight. Hexagon has been working on this for quite a bit of time. I'm going to give, as Attorney Kennedy mentioned, thank you, appreciate it. I am not old yet, but I'm getting there and struggle to keep track of everything. I'm going to give a bit of an overview of who Hexagon Energy is, what our role is, what we hope to accomplish with this project, and then hand it over to an actual Hansman to guide you guys through the actual details of this project. So thanks for your time. Yeah, so as Attorney Kennedy mentioned, this is the second phase of a Stewart Creek Solar. The first phase was approved in 2020. That was a 600-megawatt alternating current array. This is another 600-megawatt array. That said, if you look at the acreages, you'll note that we're not doubling the acreage that we're requesting to use. That's because many of the parcels that we are proposing to use in this project will interlock with the Phase One of the project. So that is all evident based on the information that you have, but we'll talk through that. I won't spend this much time on every slide, and I only have six, so we'll try to get through this pretty quickly. Next slide, please. All right. So Hexagon Energy, we're a small development firm. We operate out of Charlottesville, Virginia. Matt Hansman, our CEO, who can't be here due to his surgery, is, he has deep experience in this field. He's been doing this for 20, 20-plus years across wind and solar. He did this before it was cool and before everybody else was trying to do it. Hexagon is the third company he's founded like this. The previous ones he sold, one to BP, one to Panasonic, he has a lot of experience with this. Hexagon is a vehicle. Hexagon is a vehicle and a company that he wanted to start as he had this experience to own and operate for a long time. I was lucky enough to join the team out of grad school about eight years ago and went from not, not even hardly knowing what a solar panel was to now leading our utility-scale development team. So it's a lot of fun. You can, you can see details here. But what I'd like to kind of make clear about, there's two points I'd like to make about who Hexagon is and how we try to work. The first is that we're a small company. We started, when I started, there were four of us. We're now up to almost 30. But as a small team, we punch well above our weight class. So we, we do business, and I'll show you in just a moment, with some of the biggest companies out there. They trust us to put together quality projects that are delivered on time, on budget, excuse me, and otherwise. But with that, we bring a, I'm not going to call it mom and pops, but we bring a small shop's attention to detail and presence in communities. And that leads me into the second point that I'd like to make, which you'll see there that there are three commitments that Hexagon holds to. That's a commitment to communities, a commitment to landowners, and a commitment to the environment. We take all three of these very seriously, but I'd like to stress one, and this is both personal and, and business for me. My wife is a planner, an urban planner by training, and I have this PhD in humans and how our systems operate and work together. We take very seriously our commitment to working with communities. I hope that is evident by the fact that over the last two years, Will and I have been here multiple times. There is an interesting context as far as solar goes in Illinois right now with the passage of House Bill 4412, which I believe many are familiar with. This is a law that, in some ways, has been seen as steamrolling county's authority to be able to approve or not approve solar projects by effectively directing that they have to be approved. Look, as a developer, yeah, that's helpful to me because I'm able to then have some certainty around the way we permit these projects and how it goes. As a citizen and a community member, I'm not exactly sure how I feel about it, and I'm not able to go too much into how, what that means. But what I'd like to bring to everybody's attention here is that well before House Bill 4412 was introduced, well before I even knew it existed or any, had heard anything of it, Will and I were here at the Renewable Energy Committee meetings for, for over a whole process of a year to help the county of Lee put together what we thought was a best-in-class solar energy, excuse me, a solar energy bylaw that we thought was both fair to us as developers, fair to the county, and gave the county discretion. We were very surprised when we saw 4412, and we hope, in as much as possible, to be able to avoid any headache or run in with that, or even people feeling like we may be trying to take advantage of some sort of state law. We, we really do take our engagement with community seriously. We build strong relationships with the villages of Lee, villages of, and Stewart, as well as many neighbors. So I don't mean to belabor a point here, but I just want to, want to say that Hexagon does take our engagement with communities very seriously. Move on to the next slide, please. Yeah, this is just a quick map of projects that Hexagon works on. As you can see, a lot of it's clustered on the East Coast. We've been working on some standalone battery storage projects down in Texas. I spent quite a bit of time up in the Northeast. I was born in Arkansas, so the Northeast is a foreign land for me, but I learned how to navigate it over the years. And now here I am in the Midwest, a little bit closer to home. And you'll see kind of there's a stretch running really from Louisiana up through, up through here. And that's, that's a majority of our very large-scale utility-scale projects. Yeah, next slide, please. Almost done. This is just a list of some of the partners. You know, what I was just saying is that Hexagon works hard to, to work with some of the biggest names out there, as well as bringing kind of a, a very local touch. I'm not going to belabor this point either, but this is just a list of some of the folks we've worked with. I believe Huddleston McBride, people are pretty familiar. He's a local, a local fellow to the area and has a lot of experience with grain tile, which we'll talk through a little bit in a moment on the project details. Next slide, please. Just a very brief snapshot of our company, what we've grown to. It's been very fun to, to build from, from the ground up. But yeah, when we started, there was about half of that top row, and now it's fun to have grown. But that's everybody. That's a face. If you look at our website, you'll see us all, and you'll see how to get in contact with us. We're not hard to be in touch with. Next slide, please. All right. So the last thing of perhaps of substance that I really wanted to try to address this evening with you all. I've heard a question brought up on occasion, which is, okay, Lee County, but it's really not just Lee County. This is across the country. I was in Maine last week addressing the same question for a small project that we have up there. We've approved a project. We've approved a lot of projects. Why aren't they built? What's taking so long? There's a lot of different answers to this question, and of course, the developer's going to have one, but I have what I believe is the honest answer. And it's that, we'll have to separate into the two different sides because there are the small projects, what we call community solar projects, that typically are five megawatts and below. Those operate on their own program. They operate under the auspices of a state program. That's how they're financially viable because they receive state funding. What I'll speak to here is what we call the utility-scale projects. That's projects that connect to the very large power lines that run across a lot of areas. Stewart Creek is a large project, one of the largest, definitely in the state. It will be among the largest in the country if and when it's built. So, so it is a big one. The reason it's delayed, and I want to not get too technical here, but there's a group that manages the whole grid across the region of the country that stretches from here to Washington, DC, up to New Jersey, down to North Carolina. It's called PJM. PJM manages all the utilities, so ComEd's one of them. In Virginia, it's Dominion. They're both under PJM's rule. They manage who and how you connect a new project to the grid. I mentioned that Matt's been in this game before. It was cool. Eight years ago, 10 years ago, we could walk up to PJM and say, hey, we'd like to build a big project on these power lines. They say, okay. Oh, yeah, it's this much of a deposit, and they'd get us an interconnection agreement in a year or two. It was a, it was a relatively quick and easy process. As this became more and more affordable, solar is affordable. It can serve a huge role of our, our electric need. Everybody and their uncle is trying to get into the solar grid. A lot of people, I don't know if they're bad players or not, started submitting a lot of projects to this grid manager across a lot of power lines. It was very cheap. It was very easy. And for lack of a better word, they stuffed up the queue because a lot of these projects were prospective. They didn't have permits. They didn't have site control. They maybe had a swamp in the middle of them. They were things that weren't going to actually happen. And it made it very difficult for projects that are legitimate and willing to actually play ball and put our money where our mouth is to connect on a reasonable timeline. We submitted Stewart Creek Phase One and Phase Two to the grid. I don't remember the exact year, to be honest. I was off running around the Northeast at the time when that first happened. But several years back, in the meantime, PJM dot grid manager said, hold on, hold on, hold on. We need to, we need to put a, a stop on this while we figure out how we're going to sort through what's real and what's not. They have since done that. They've decided to process their grid applications in three batches. They're calling it Transition Cycle One, Transition Cycle Two, Transition Cycle Three. Cycle One began last year. Cycle Two will begin this year, and Cycle Three will begin next year. Stewart Creek Phase One is in Cycle One, so we expect to finally have results on that come end of this year. Stewart Creek Phase Two, and its battery storage is in Transition Cycle Two, so that will begin this year. The reason we haven't been able to proceed with construction on Stewart Creek Phase One and why any other large projects that you guys in the county have approved have not been able to proceed is that PJM has not given a sign-off yet to do so. But they have a plan in place, and we're all anxiously holding our breath to, to finally get those results, get the interconnection agreement, and to move forward. What I will say is that Hexagon and our team is committed to the success of Stewart Creek. Last year, we demonstrated our continued ongoing development efforts for Phase One, and we're deemed to be significantly underway with this. This is because out of pocket, we've put, I believe it's around $3 million, if not a bit more, at risk for this project already. We have a lot riding on it. We're a small team. I've talked through how that is. We don't, we can't just wheel and deal. There are big companies out there who have very deep balance sheets who don't care. I mean, they care, but they put chips on a board and wait and see what works and what doesn't. We can't afford to do that, but we also have the ability to pay very close attention to make sure our projects, if there is any path towards them working, that they do work. So we're committed to getting Phase One and Phase Two built. The delay has been PJM. I apologize for taking your time, but I hope that helps give a little bit of clarity in terms of why projects have been approved and why they have not. With that, so will Stewart Creek be built Phase One? Yes. Phase Two? I hope so. That's, that's up to our conversation tonight. So thank you all for the time. That's all I have here directly to say. Thank you.
I just have a few follow-up questions, if I may. Mr. Reamer, if, if this project is approved by the county board and a special use permit is issued, does that alone guarantee that this project will be constructed?
I, I wish it was quite that simple. It's, it's not quite that simple. I'd say the permit is a necessary, but not sufficient step towards getting the project built. When we build a solar array, we need four things. We need a place where people want to buy power. That's PJM, as I was just talking about. I don't think I quite went into depth of why, but it's because data centers in, in the East Coast and across the whole area and large industrial groups want to buy power. That's the first. We need a site, so we need a place that's buildable, that has willing landowners who have agreed and who want to use their land for this purpose. We have that with this site. Then we need two last things. We need an interconnection agreement, and we need a, a set of permits from whoever the permitting authorities are. Don't tell anybody, but I just told you how to do my job. That's what, that's what we do, is those four steps through and through. If we're able to get this interconnection agreement and we're able to get all of these permits, then yes, definitely the project will go forward. We expect the interconnection agreement to work. We have a transmission engineering, a couple of guys who run this, and we work with large firms that do analyses. We're very bullish on the interconnection working. It's possible it doesn't happen, so I can't say, you know. But in order for us to take that step to continue moving towards an agreement, which is very expensive, I believe we have to post, I'm under oath, I think it's three or eight million. I don't know, so I can't say which one it is. But throughout this year, we have to post with PJM three or eight more million dollars to keep moving forward. To be able to safeguard this investment, I'm trying to get as many ducks in a row ahead of time to help us be able to do that. So my hope is with this permit that we get that necessary, not sufficient, but necessary and very, very helpful step. And like I said, this interconnection side with PJM, we're confident in how that's looking. We, to give a little proof of that, we're floating this with outside investors who want to build it. This is a, this is a huge project. I mean, it probably somewhere around $1.5 billion worth of investment. We're not going to finance that on our own. We'll need outside investors. They're very interested, very eager based on what we're seeing from PJM. So we're trying to get all these pieces in place. But a permit for Phase Two is a big piece of that, so that's why I'm here in front of you guys tonight. And Will, and Will, Mr. Hansman will also speak through this on the project details shortly.
So if I understand your testimony correctly, in order for, for the project to have an interconnection agreement with PJM, you must have the, the appropriate zoning approvals in place.
Not quite. PJM will let us do whatever we want as long as we pay them the right amount. I won't say do whatever we want. According to their rules, as long as we pay the money. No. If we don't have a permit, they'll let us sign something, but that means we're paying them millions to tens of millions of dollars. If I don't have a permit, when I start doing that, I'm a pretty stupid developer because then I'm, I'm out, I'm hugely at risk. So I don't have to have the permit to sign it with PJM. But if I want to build something, even if I have an agreement with PJM, but the county says no, then there's no way that happens, if that, if that's clear.
Is it possible for this project to obtain a special use permit and then have some sort of feasibility study fall through with PJM later on?
God forbid, but yes, it is possible. I, I certainly don't see that coming down the pipeline. We've been very responsible with how we've allocated our resources here, but it is, it is certainly always possible.
Mr. Reamer, are you familiar with the Lee County ordinance that regulates commercial solar energy facilities?
I am.
And are you familiar with the petition fee under that ordinance?
I am.
And what is that?
It's a fee that we pay to the county. You know, this is, this is a lot of people hours being spent in this conversation, and Ms. Hinkle and otherwise, people are spending a lot of time. It's a fee that we pay to the county to help cover the cost of reviewing this and also just that we pay that the county is able to use. I believe it's in the amount of $100,000 for this that we had to pay for our application.
And so using that exact scenario that I just said, so, so where you obtain the special use permit for this project, but then something falls through, you know, let's blame PJM, but something falls through and the project's not able to be constructed, what happens to that petition fee?
That stays right with the county. That's not refunded to us. That's money that's paid and is, is straight in their pockets. That's part of that risk that we, we take in developing.
I have nothing further.
Any questions from the member of the zoning board?
No questions.
How are developments going in areas where PJM isn't pointing to interconnection?
I wish I could say it's a dreamland out there. Unfortunately, it's not. So I can wax all night about this, but I'll briefly say the, the group that's akin to PJM that runs a little bit west of here. So it's from pretty much New Orleans up through Ottawa, so Minnesota. But actually, I don't know how Canada fits in there, but they're in it somehow or other. That's called MISO. PJM and MISO are kind of the two big marketplaces that solar development is taking place in right now. And they sort of, I'd say they lagged one of each other by a step, and now they're trying to one-up each other by a step. MISO is just putting some extreme reforms in place this year that's increasing the costs to apply because, again, they're trying to weed out bad actors. That's great. We're, I'm all on board because we, we don't submit things in bad faith. We're too small. But it does make it a lot riskier to be able to do it. They're also delayed. We're hoping, I mean, they're telling us that this new queue system they're going to roll out on March, I believe it's March 15th or 18th. They're telling us they're going to start reviewing these things in a year, which would be, I mean, it would be incredible, but I'll believe it when I see it because that's never happened before. But it, it's, it's a problem across the board, I guess, is what I'm trying to, to get at. And each one has their own flavor. Texas has its own. California has its own. And I don't have much experience there, but I know we're running into, each one has its issues. But the two big ones are, are very slow.
No other question?
Sir?
Sir, since you're, now I was going in this area. PJM then is basically from the Mississippi East then? Is that what you're saying?
Not quite. So Missis, and so to be clear, not, I don't exactly know how this started. It was back in the seven, I think it was the 70s as energy markets were deregulated that these, they were called ISOs, Independent System Operators, or RTOs, Regional Transmission Organizations. I'm going too deep here. But not every part of the country has an ISO, only large parts of, only most of it, but not all of it. PJM actually goes from here, this, we're like in a weird finger that PJM carves out that comes close to Chicago. Most of Illinois, at, at least to my knowledge, as, as I remember, is in what's called MISO. We're actually working on MISO projects in Illinois right now as well, a little further south. PJM goes from here as its furthest west outpoint, all the way to pretty much DC. And then it goes north to New Jersey and down to just northern North Carolina. So it gets Virginia, our home state, where we work on projects, and, and that's in PJM. If you go further west and south, you end up hitting MISO. To the west of that is what they call Southern Power Pool. There, there's several different ones.
Well, with all these projects, we've always had the question of ask where this, this power is going. And in general, we're assuming it stops at Chicago from this area since it's a big power hub.
That's the biggest, that's the biggest draw of power. Now, to be fair, in terms of how the power is sold, we might contract, we could conceivably contract with somebody in the DC area. And what they do is they take the balance of electrons across the grid. So clearly not the electrons generated here going all the way to Washington, DC. They're going to go, well, they're actually go to the substations between here and Chicago. So you'll get some of it here locally, but most of it's going to ship down to Chicago in terms of where it actually gets used. But I'm, I'm not an electrical engineer, so don't, don't hold me to that too, too closely.
All right. Thank you for your background information and so.
Any other questions from the zoning board? Questions from the zoning officer? County officials?
None.
All right. So with respect to the interested observers, I'll go through your, the list here. And these are questions for this witness based on his testimony. So Carl. It, it might be easier too if you can use the podium with the microphone. Well, it's right back there, right, right in the back.
Is it working? Oh, yeah.
I don't really have any questions. I've talked with these people before, and my property adjoins their proposed area on the county line in Lee. And I have no problem. That farmland is, is questionable on any given year as to its productivity. And we all want our air conditioners and toaster ovens and everything else to work every day. The electricity has to come from somewhere. This project doesn't seem like it causes pollution or anything. And I don't really have a problem with it budding up to my property. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. And as we go through this list, remember, this is the opportunity for questions. If you have other comments, we'll allow them later as well. So David? Any questions for this witness? Lynn? John? Sorry, it's easier for us to hear if you.
Okay. So you already put in a, a request for the PJM hookup for Phase Two?
We did, yes, several years ago.
Okay. So, so you already planned on that before you even came to? Okay. So, so you already planned on that before you even came to, to start that several, or once you were done with phase one, is that, once you got phase one approved, you decided to put in for phase two?
That, that's right. So we looked at the power line and thought it looked like it had more capacity and an ability to carry more, more power than just the initial phase one project. Additionally, there were landowners that had not wanted to participate in the first phase of the project that upon seeing the first start moving forward, expressed interest in participating. We thought, hey, there's two options. There's a, there's room for more power. There's more landowners interested in participating. We have a good relationship with the county. Let's pursue a bit more of a project here. And that's how we ended up working on it. But we already had those relationships with the landowners and saw space on the grid.
Okay. Yep. That's, thank you.
I'm not sure when to address this, but I, I just recently found out that some of the projects are going to, they're getting sold to foreign ownership. Because I know that you guys will not be, we'd love to have you stay forever, but at some point you're going to sell the project. Is there any way that it can be a guarantee that American owned companies will, will be buying the, the solar project that you, because I know the BP just sold to, hold on one second. They just sold to, to a Chinese or an Australian company and also Darrell is, Israel. Just, let me just see what I have here. But I know that one went to an Israel company and, and another county in Indiana. So I'm just wondering, are you guys going to try to sell to American investors versus foreign investors? Because, you know, we're trying to have, you know, one of the good things about, you know, renewable energies, it's ours. And, and it's going to, you know, how much control would they have over, say they, they didn't want to give us the power anymore and they just decided somehow to get it somewhere else? Or shut it down?
It's a really good question and one unfortunately of our political day in context that I'm not fully able and qualified to talk to, speak to. I would love to, to make sure that we sell to an American company. I can't guarantee it because there's a lot of money that goes into this that's beyond my pay grade. I will try to have that happen. I will say what I'm really excited to see happening here in the, in our country is with the IRA, we've incentivized production of panels here in the United States. Can't guarantee that we're going to be able to find those for the right price and on the right timeline. But what I can say is that we've started to find companies that are producing those in the quantity, at the price and on the timeline that we need. And we're starting to see these projects built with American made panels. And so my hope and dream is that we work towards that, that we continue to build up our resilience and our energy independence so that we can run our air conditioners and toaster ovens locally here with the security we need. You know, I just saw that a Japanese company is wanting to buy a, I forget its name, but one of the, the main steel companies here in the country. I can't provide too much comment on what should happen politically. There's a lot that goes into it, but I hope to be able to use this chance to, to bolster our American economy and our power supply. That's the best I got, unfortunately.
Okay.
But good question. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we have online MGV. Do you have a question of this witness?
Not at the moment.
Thank you. Petitioner, any questions for your witness following that?
None. I would just move for entry of that exhibit for demonstrative purposes.
Right. So petitioner's exhibit one for demonstrative purposes was moved for consideration into the record. Any objection? Hearing none, it will be admitted to the record.
I have no further questions of this witness.
You can step down, sir.
Thank you all.
I would like to call William Hansman as our next witness.
Mr. Hanson, come on up. Mr. Chairman?
Go swear amen.
It's here.
You solemnly swear firm under penalty of perjury that this morning you're about to.
Thank you. Can you please identify yourself for the record?
My name's William Hansman.
And how do you spell your name?
It's spelled W I L L I A M H A N T Z M O N.
Mr. Hansman, tell us a little bit about your educational background.
Yeah, I graduated with a BA from the University of Chicago in 2018 where I majored in political science and environmental studies with an emphasis on economics.
What is your current job occupation?
I'm a senior development manager with Hexagon Energy.
And how long have you been in that role?
I've served in that specific role for the past two years, though I've worked with Hexagon Energy and varying capacities over the past seven.
Who or what is Hexagon Energy?
Hexagon Energy is a renewable energy developer focused on the development of solar and wind projects across the United States, predominantly focused on east and Midwest development.
What are your job duties and responsibilities as a senior development manager?
My job is to identify potential solar sites and identified markets and to work with landowners to sign contracts and development agreements that allow for us to go forward and submit these projects to counties like Lee and ultimately construct solar energy facilities in the future.
And are you familiar with the entity known as Stewart Creek Solar LLC?
I am.
How so?
I'm the lead developer on that project. I originated the first contract back in 2018 with a participating landowner.
And so it's, it's a fair statement that you've been working or at least involved with Stewart Creek since 2018?
That's correct.
And what if anything, can you tell me about the relationship between Stewart Creek Solar LLC and Hexagon Energy LLC?
Stewart Creek Solar LLC is a project development company that is a wholly owned subsidiary of Hexagon Energy.
And are you personally familiar with commercial solar energy facilities generally?
I am.
And how so?
My job for all the time that I've been at Hexagon has been focused on the development of commercial solar energy facilities, which are designed to sell power to the grid rather than to specific landowners like behind the meter installations or residential solar installations.
How many megawatts of renewable energy development have you personally overseen?
A little over four gigawatts.
And have you had any previous positions that are relevant to your current job duties with Hexagon?
I have. Prior to Hexagon's inception, I worked at Helios Age Energy, which is now owned by Orsted. It had been sold to a number of other companies before the new parent company Orsted owned it.
Who or what entity has applied for the special use permit?
Stewart Creek Solar LLC.
Mr. Hansman, for the record's sake, I'm going to hold up a document. I'm sure you're going to recognize it right off the bat, but it is a binder and I'm going to read you the title of it. It reads Stewart Creek Solar Phase Two Special Use Permit Application, January 2024. Are you familiar with this?
I am.
What is it?
It's the application binder that I drafted and pulled together for the phase two special use permit application that was submitted to Lee County.
And did you personally prepare this?
I did.
Did you prepare in anticipation of tonight's hearing?
Yes.
And does it contain true and accurate copies of all documents pertaining to the Stewart Creek Solar Phase Two project?
It does.
At this time, I'd like to admit this into evidence as petitioner's exhibit two.
So petitioner's exhibit two is an offer of evidence. Objection from the members of the zoning board.
None.
Would you be so kind as to maybe describe the content of what documents we're talking about when we admit it to the record to clear what we're.
Sure. So, so the beginning pages of this application binder, what I will refer to throughout the course of this hearing as an application binder, it first contains a project narrative. It also contains a copy of the petition for special use permit. And then it contains various reports prepared for and on behalf of the project. Highlight a few, the decommissioning plan is in here. There's a noise study. The ECOCAT, so the IDNR consultation, the United States, United States Fish and Wildlife Service report, also known as the IPAC, is also included in here. And we'll get through some of those through his testimony.
Hearing no objection to the mission, but they're a part of it.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Hansman, on behalf of the applicant, that is Stewart Creek Solar LLC, do you commit to being bound by all representations and affirmations contained within this application binder?
Yes.
And again, on behalf of the applicant, do you commit to being bound by all representations and affirmations made under oath during tonight's hearing?
Yes.
Are you familiar with the Lee County ordinance that regulates commercial solar energy facilities?
I am.
And how so?
As Scott Reamer had mentioned in his testimony, over the past couple of years, we've been heavily involved in working with Lee County and the Renewable Energy Committee in drafting their solar ordinance, not to dictate what is in that ordinance, but to help demonstrate how Lee County can work to allow these projects to be developed in the right and responsible way. Not to prohibit the development of solar energy projects, but to encourage solar energy projects to be developed in the right way.
Now, is it also a fair statement that contained in this application binder, you have addressed each and every one of the ordinance requirements?
Yes.
And have you also addressed in this application binder how the project meets and conforms to those requirements?
Yes.
Please provide us with a general description of the project itself.
Phase two of the Stewart Creek Solar project is a 600 megawatt commercial solar energy system with a 150 megawatt supporting battery energy storage system. That project is generally located in the same geographic region as phase one. So that is to the east primarily of Interstate 39, to the south of the Ogle County line, to the west of the DeKalb County line and north of Highway 30. There are a few properties that are located west of Interstate 39 and there is one property located to the south of Highway 30. Though the vast majority of the array, the heart of the array, if you will, is to the east in the same geographic region as phase one.
And the participating parcels that comprise this project that is phase two, are those located in Willow Creek and Alto Townships?
They are.
And is phase two proposed to be constructed on approximately 3,493 acres?
Yes.
Does that involve 68 parcels of land?
Yes, and approximately 19 participating landowners.
What is the overall nameplate capacity or generating capacity for this project?
The solar energy generating capacity would be 600 megawatts AC and a 150 megawatt AC battery storage facility.
And do you recall sitting here today, the potential equipment manufacturers for this project?
Yes, right now we are proposing to utilize a Canadian solar panel. It would be a 430 watt bifacial solar panel that's able to generate electricity both from the sunlight that hits the top of the panel as well as any sunlight that's reflected from the ground. For the racking system, we're proposing to use a DuraTrak racking system and either PowerGen or T-MIC inverters for the system. We're also looking at Fluent Substack or SunGrow for our battery component manufacturers.
And for, for those equipment manufacturers that you just testified to, did you provide the specification sheets within your application materials? What if anything, can you tell me about the type of solar panels and modules that you're proposing to use?
The solar panels that we're proposing to use are photovoltaic panels. They are bifacial and will be, is fixed on a single axis tracking system. Each of the panels, which we're proposing to use approximately 1.7 million for phase two, are comprised of 144 individual solar cells.
And what, what direction will these be fixed?
They'll be fixed in a north to south orientation, but will track the sun over the course of the day as it goes east to west.
Will these panels utilize any anti-reflective coating?
They will, in order to minimize glare and enhance the absorption and efficiency and productivity of the panels themselves.
And will these panels be installed on posts?
They will be installed on the racking system, the DuraTrak racking system that is going to be as fixed to the pile driven high beams.
What is the maximum height of the panels at full tilt?
It'll be 15 feet below the 20 foot maximum height limit as specified in the Lee County Solar Ordinance.
How many inverters are you proposing to use for this project?
We're proposing to use 156 inverter stations, which are comprised of five individual inverters and one transformer per station.
Where will those be situated?
They will be dispersed throughout the site.
What is the number of substations that the project will utilize?
We'll have one substation to interconnect with PJM and ComEd's transmission network and one switchyard and interconnection facility for the project.
And will this project be monitored?
It will be.
Will that be live monitoring or remote?
There will be onsite monitoring equipment, but primarily will be monitored remotely to ensure that everything is operating as intended. And if there are any issues identified, those will be flagged to local contractors who can use then the onsite monitoring equipment to more precisely identify the location that's in need of repair.
With the remote monitoring that will take place for the project, will that be monitored continuously?
It will be.
Is there a site plan for this project?
There is. It's provided in the application materials.
And is that located in appendix D of the application materials?
It is.
What if anything, can you tell me about the project phasing timeline?
For the project, we are anticipating being able to begin construction on phase two in December of 2026, which should take approximately 20 to 24 months to fully construct the array. In order to begin that construction, we would first begin with the grading of the facility. Once, and that grading is likely to be minimal or no grading needed. Once that's 75% complete, we'll be able to begin the pile driving of the facility. Once those piles are about 75%, or sorry, not 75, but 20% complete, we can then start to install the tracking and racking system. Once that's a 20%, we can begin adding the panels themselves onto the system. And as that continues, we're able to work across the entire array simultaneously on all of the parcels.
How long is construction estimated to take?
Approximately 20 to 24 months.
And I'm sure that's dependent on many different factors, but including the weather?
Yep. Weather was a, a large factor, depending on what winters look like, whether it's rainy, snowy or wet to either allow construction or prohibit it from occurring.
For the construction workers who will work on this job, where will they park?
There will be onsite parking provided to the construction workers that will be on the properties that are going to be a part of the facility.
So they won't be parking on the side of the road or anything like that? Who will own and operate this project?
Stewart Creek Solar LLC will be the owner and operator of the project.
Have you provided proof of site control for this project?
We have.
And is that included with the application materials?
Yes.
And have you redacted all confidential information from that proof?
We have.
Wouldn't that be found in appendix C of the application materials?
Yes.
Are you familiar with the site plan requirements under the ordinance here in Lee County?
I am.
And for those site plans, have you shown the planned location of the panels?
Yes.
Have you provided the legal descriptions for each site?
Those are provided as a part of the petition, which can be found in appendix A if I'm not mistaken.
And on those site plans that you've submitted as part of the application materials, have you identified the participating and non-participating residences?
Yes.
What about occupied community buildings?
Yes.
Have you shown the parcel boundary lines?
We have.
And do those site plans identify adjoining properties?
They do.
And are the setbacks reflected on those site plans?
Yes.
What about public access roads?
Yes.
And turnout locations?
Yep.
Is the substation reflected in the site plan?
It is.
What about operations and maintenance buildings?
Those are displayed as well.
On the site plan, is that correct?
Yes.
And is all electrical cabling to the substation shown on those site plans?
They are.
And any ancillary equipment to the, to the project?
Yes.
Are third party transmission lines shown on the site plans?
Yes.
And on those same site plans, have you identified the location of any wetlands?
We have, yes.
What about floodplains? What about floodplains?
Those as well. They're reflected.
Have you identified drainage structures, including the surface ditches and subsurface drainage lines?
Yes, as they're known. Formal drainage identification surveys will be performed prior to construction.
And have you identified any underground mines on the site plans?
None were located.
So is it a fair statement, none were located, so none would need to be shown?
Yes.
And have you identified scenic and natural areas within 1,500 feet of the proposed project?
We have.
And on those site plans, have you shown the layout of all structures within the boundaries of any setback?
Yes.
In the application materials, did you provide a proposed decommissioning plan?
We did.
And is that found in Appendix K of the application binder?
It is. We also commissioned a third-party engineering decommissioning plan, which will provide more precise and accurate information on decommissioning.
Mr. Faciliter, I have an exhibit that I'd like to pass out. I can have Mr. Reamer do that while I continue with my questioning, if that's all right?
That would be the document that Mr. Reamer is currently passing out.
So, Mr. Hansman, there is a decommissioning plan already submitted as Appendix K in the application materials, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. What is that decommissioning plan, or rather, who prepared that plan?
Hexagon Energy had internally developed that decommissioning plan in compliance with the Lee County solar ordinance. We also wanted to supplement that decommissioning plan with a third-party Illinois licensed engineering firm, Kimley Horn, as well.
And have you been handed a copy of the exhibit going around?
I have not, no. I have now.
Okay. Are you familiar with that document?
Yes.
And what is that?
That is the decommissioning plan developed for Stewart Creek Solar LLC by Kimley Horn.
Okay. And who or what is Kimley Horn?
Kimley Horn is an engineering firm that is very familiar with renewable energy development, and we've worked with them on a number of projects, not just Stewart Creek Solar.
And so you just testified as to an updated decommissioning plan. Is that an updated commissioning plan prepared by Kimley Horn?
Yes.
And was it prepared at Stewart Creek's direction?
It was.
And was it prepared in anticipation for tonight's hearing?
Yes.
At this time, I'd like to admit the decommissioning plan into evidence as petitioner is Exhibit 3.
Any objections from the members of the zoning board? Zoning officer? County?
No.
Any objection from any interested observer? Hearing no objection, petitioner is Exhibit 3 will be allowed and admitted in the record.
Thank you. Mr. Hansman, have you had a noise analysis performed for this project?
We have, yes.
What other studies, if any, have you provided with the application materials that demonstrates the project's compliance with all provisions of the ordinance?
Yeah, the previous two that you just mentioned, the noise analysis, which we had initially included, a draft that was prepared by Hexagon Energy LLC, that was supplemented by a noise analysis prepared by Kimley Horn as well, which I'll let you take care of, I'm guessing, in a little bit, as well as a decommissioning plan. We have also had a preliminary geotechnical analysis to determine the feasibility of the solar project performed by SCI Engineering. We've also completed the ECOCAT in accordance with the Lee County solar ordinance, the IPAC with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, as well as a number of other studies. A third-party appraisal analysis to determine what impact, if any, this project would have on adjacent property values was performed by Koen Resnick, who are a property financial expert who we had coordinated with as a part of phase one to demonstrate that this would have no negative impact on adjacent property values, as well as working with the Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District to draft a LISA and resource inventory report, which was, to my knowledge, provided to Lee County as well. And lastly, we provided a number of reports from the USDA to determine or to demonstrate what soils and subsurface qualities exist across the site as well.
I'm going to jump back to that noise analysis that you testified to. Was that initial analysis provided as Appendix J to the application materials?
It was.
And have you had the occasion to have that noise analysis updated?
We have.
Was that since the filing or submittal of these application materials?
Yes.
Mr. Hansman, you've been handed what I'm going to call Exhibit 4 for identification purposes. Are you familiar with this document?
I am.
And what is it?
This is the noise analysis that Kimley Horn prepared for Stewart Creek Solar LLC at our directive.
And as you previously testified, Kimley Horn is the engineering firm?
They are.
And did they, excuse me, did they prepare this noise analysis study in anticipation for tonight's hearing?
They did, and in compliance with Lee County rules and regulations, as well as the Illinois Pollution Control Board.
And have you reviewed the analyses and conclusions contained in this report?
I have.
And what findings or conclusions, if any?
The conclusion that they reached that the project as designed is not going to exceed acceptable noise levels and is in full compliance with the Lee County solar ordinance, the Lee County Code, and the Illinois Pollution Control Board standards as they pertain to noise.
I would move for entry of this noise analysis study as Exhibit 4.
Any objections for the members of the zoning board?
No.
Zoning officer? County?
None.
Any objection from interested observers? It'll be admitted.
Thank you. Mr. Hansman, has the project executed an agricultural impact mitigation agreement or otherwise known or referred to as an AMA for this project?
Yes, this was executed for both phase one and phase two. I believe Ms. Henkel admitted those into evidence previously.
And is that AMA document also found as Appendix P in the application materials?
Yes.
And on behalf of the applicant sitting here tonight, will you adhere to all terms and conditions of that AMA?
Yes.
Have you provided a topographic map with the application materials?
Yes.
And is that found in Appendix E?
Yes.
And does that map show the project site and the surrounding area?
It does.
Has a stormwater management plan been prepared for this project?
It has.
And would you term that a preliminary stormwater management plan?
Yes, it would be a preliminary stormwater management plan that we drafted and discussed with the Lee County engineer and received his approval that for the special use permit, it was acceptable, and we will be providing a final stormwater management plan once site design, engineering, and a litany of other studies are completed in advance of our building permit application.
And you've had those communications with the Lee County engineer prior to tonight's hearing, is that correct? If I understand your testimony correctly, a formal stormwater management plan will be prepared prior to the application for a building permit?
Yes.
To the best of your knowledge, has a natural resources information report been prepared by the Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District?
Yes.
Did you have the occasion to initiate a consultation with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources through its ecological compliance assessment tool, or otherwise known as the ECOCAT?
Yes, that consultation was terminated as well, as there are no identified species or threatened endangered wildlife on site that would impact the project.
And do you recall?
Or that would be impacted by the project, I should say.
Do you recall when that consultation took place?
September of 2023, I believe.
I rudely interrupted you, but my understanding is that that consultation has been terminated?
Yes.
And did you provide proof of this with your application materials?
I did.
And is that included as Appendix O in the application materials?
Yes.
Did you initiate an environmental review through the United States Fish and Wildlife Service through that information for planning and consultation, otherwise known as the IPAC?
I did.
Do you recall when?
In December of '23.
And what result, if any?
The result of that was to provide us with a species list that identified threatened and endangered species that could be present on site that we need to be aware of when doing additional studies in the future to determine whether or not they are, in fact, in those areas. Those would likely be identified via a phase-one ESA and a threatened and endangered species study that we perform with an Illinois licensed engineering firm.
And did you provide proof of the results of that IPAC consultation as Appendix L?
Yes.
Did you submit 12 physical copies of your special use permit application to the county?
Yes.
And did you provide one digital copy of your application as well?
Yes, that was provided on a USB drive.
Do you intend to follow industry standards in the construction of this project?
Yes.
What about for the maintenance of this project?
Yes.
Does the same hold true for the operations of this project?
It does.
What about the decommissioning phase of this project?
Yes.
Will this project adhere to all applicable requirements of the American National Standards Institute?
Yes.
And do you commit to submitting certificates of design compliance that all equipment has an Utter Riders Laboratories rating?
Yes.
Do you commit to using all new equipment for this project?
Yes.
And to flush that out more, you will not use any used or experimental equipment whatsoever for the project components, is that correct?
That's correct.
Do you agree to have all electrical components of the project adhere to the applicable local, state, and national codes?
Yes.
What about the relevant national and international standards, including the American National Standards Institute and International Electrical Commission?
Yes.
Now, you previously testified that those panels will be 15 feet in height at full tilt, but will all components of solar panels be up 20 feet even at full tilt?
Yeah.
Are you familiar with the screening requirements of the ordinance?
I am.
Are there any platted subdivisions located within one-quarter mile of the project site?
Yes, there are.
And for those platted subdivisions, do you agree to install the visual screen according to the requirements of the ordinance?
Yes.
What about non-participating residents? Are there any of those within one-quarter mile of the project?
Yes, approximately 63.
And do you agree to provide the visual screen option to those non-participating residences that are within one-quarter mile of the project area?
Yes.
And will that option be sent in writing to all non-participating residences that are within one-quarter mile of the project area?
It will be.
And will that option also include a proposed design and budget estimate for the design, installation, maintenance, and removal of the visual screen?
Yes.
And would that option include a one-time payment of the visual screen that, again, would be comprised of the cost of design, installation, maintenance, and removal of the visual screen?
Yes.
And do you commit to providing proof of that, that you offered the visual screening option to the Lee County zoning administrator at least 30 days prior to when you apply for a building permit?
Yes.
Do you commit to providing a visual screen that is comprised of vegetative landscaping, opaque fencing, or an approved combination thereof according to the terms of the ordinance?
Yes.
And will your visual screen be designed and prepared by an Illinois-registered landscape architect?
Yes.
And will that visual screen be reflected in a final site plan provided to the county at the time you apply for a building permit?
Yes.
Will all vegetation be planted at a minimum of three feet tall?
It will be.
And will it reach a minimum height of eight feet tall within four years of planning?
It will. In some cases, plants are plants. They might die. So in the event that any of those plants do die, they will be replaced and brought to compliance with the Lee County ordinance.
And do you commit to maintaining that vegetative screen in good condition throughout the life of the project?
Yes.
Will you install that vegetative screen as early as possible during the construction phase of this project?
Yes.
Mr. Hansman, will there be any lighting associated with this project?
There will be. We intend to use Dark Sky certified lighting, following conversations that we had with the villages of Lee and Stewart in advance of this permitting hearing.
And will any lighting associated with this project be shielded and downcast so that it does not spill over onto adjacent properties?
It will be.
Will you utilize any security cameras for this project?
We will. Those will be placed at critical areas of the project, such as the project substation, inverter locations, as well as entrances to the facility. Those cameras will be oriented in a way to focus on project components specifically, not adjacent properties. So it will be on the site location proper.
And will all power lines, including communication lines, be buried underground for this project?
They will be, unless there are certain instances where we are unable to place them underground, and at that time, we will get the approval of the Lee County zoning administrator, provide evidence as to why we are unable to put them underground, and a, an illustration of what the above-ground connection would look like.
Will there be a fence around this project?
There will be.
And will that fence separate phase one from phase two, or will the fence encompass the parcels together?
It would encompass the parcels together regardless as to what phase they were permitted as a part of.
What type of fence are you proposing?
We're proposing to use a six-foot security fence for this project.
And is the proposed fence compliant with the National Electrical Code?
Yes.
And will all fencing contain visible warning signs concerning the voltage of the project?
Yes, they will.
And will it have appropriate signs in accordance with the American National Standards Institute Z535 safety sign standards?
Yes.
And will the fence contain appropriate signage according to OSHA regulations?
Yes.
And will all of the aforementioned signage that we just talked about, will those be placed at the base of all pad-mounted transformers?
Yes.
What about at the substation?
Yes.
And will those also be placed at the entrances?
They will be.
Sitting here today, can you tell me how many entrances are proposed for this project?
I believe 22.
And will the signs at each of the entrances contain the facility's 911 address and a 24-hour emergency contact number?
Yes.
Will any components of this project require the use of guy wires?
Potentially, some of the interconnection facilities may require guy wires in order to provide additional stability and structural integrity for the poles to ensure they're reliably installed.
And in those instances where you have to use those guy wires, will you utilize visible reflective colored objects to be placed on all anchor points?
Yes.
And will you also place those objects up to a height of 15 feet from the ground?
Yes.
Are you familiar with the setback requirements of the solar ordinance in Lee County?
I am.
And do you agree to adhere to those setback requirements specifically for this project?
Yes.
And are those setbacks noted in the site plans submitted with the application materials?
They are, yes, as well as additional setbacks that we're committed to following discussions with the villages of Lee and Stewart to provide additional setbacks in identified areas to facilitate economic growth and development for those villages.
And would those setbacks be in excess of those ordinance requirements?
They will be.
So I just want to touch on briefly the setbacks contained within the ordinance. Will the project be set back 150 feet from the nearest point on the outside wall of the structure of an occupied community building?
Yes.
And will it be set back 150 feet from the nearest point of the outside wall of a non-participating residence?
Yes.
And will the project itself be set back 50 feet from the nearest point on the property line of a non-participating property without a residence?
Yes.
And will that also be set back 50 feet from the nearest edge of a public road right-of-way?
Yes.
Will you enter into a road use agreement with the county?
We will.
What about other applicable townships?
Yes.
And do you intend to do so not less than 30 days prior to the issuance of a building permit?
Yes.
And are you familiar with the requirements of the solar ordinance as they relate to the consulting fund?
Yes. Yes.
And do you agree to post the money into the consulting fund according to the terms of the ordinance?
Yes.
And at the time that you go to apply for a building permit for this project, do you agree to provide soil and geotechnical boring reports to the Lee County engineer?
Yes.
Will you do so at your sole cost and expense?
We will.
Will you, at all, at all times, excuse me, follow all guidelines for conservation practices, impact mitigation, as submitted by the Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District?
Yes.
And will you submit grading plans for the proposed substation to the Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District prior to the issuance of any building permit?
Yes.
And will you do so to receive their input and suggestions?
We will.
Will this project, as proposed, comply with the Illinois Pollution Control Board standards?
It will, yes.
And within 60 days of completion of construction for this project, will you deliver to the Lee County zoning administrator and the Lee County Supervisor of Assessments all as-built maps, site plans, and engineering plans for this project?
Yes.
All of which will be signed and stamped by a professional engineer and licensed surveyor?
Yes.
Have you provided the engineer's certificate with your application materials?
Yes, we provided an indicative geotechnical report provided, or drafted by SCI Engineering to determine the feasibility and, and structural support of the soils for the project.
And is that included in Appendix G of your application materials?
It is.
And was that, to the best of your knowledge, completed by a structural engineer licensed in the state of Illinois?
Yes, SCI Engineering is a licensed Illinois engineering firm.
Thank you. Will there be any outdoor storage planned for this project?
Yes.
And what exactly?
It'll be located near the project substation, designed to contain materials necessary for the long-term operations and maintenance of the facility to ensure everything is kept aesthetically clean and in compliance with the Lee County Solar Ordinance.
Will construction activities commence no earlier than 7:00 AM within a quarter mile of a non-participating residence?
Yes.
And will those same construction activities end no later than 8:00 PM within a quarter mile of a non-participating residence?
They will, yes.
Will you construct and operate the project in accordance with the construction plans contained in the special use permit approved by the county if it is indeed approved?
Yes.
Are you familiar with the annual operation and maintenance reports required under the solar ordinance?
I am.
And do you agree to submit those such reports and to provide all required information to the county?
Yes.
Have you had the occasion to reach out to any local fire protection districts?
We reached out to the local fire protection districts as a part of the Phase One application.
And do you intend to do any follow-up with that local fire protection district?
We will. Prior to commencing construction and applying for a building permit, we will coordinate with the local fire protection districts to do a site walk and make any modifications that they deem necessary for the project ahead of applying for our final building permit.
And will you submit a site plan, standard operating procedure, and standard operating guidelines to the local emergency responders, including the local police, fire protection districts, and rescue agencies?
Yes.
And will you do so prior to the commencement of construction for this project?
Yes.
And will you coordinate any walkthroughs of this site with those same agencies that I mentioned?
Yes, we will do that both prior to the commencement of construction as well as after construction has been completed.
And will you provide for annual training for these agencies?
Yes.
And will you do so at your own cost and expense?
We will.
Will you develop an emergency response plan with all local emergency responders according to the requirements of the ordinance?
Yes.
And will you do so prior to the commencement of construction?
We will, yes.
And do you endeavor to make changes to that plan based on their respective feedback?
Yes.
Will any hazardous materials be kept or stored on-site during construction?
No, we might store some fuel on-site as necessary for the project, though, but no other hazardous materials.
What about during operations of the project?
No.
Will you remove all solid waste materials from the site promptly?
We will.
And will it be disposed of according to federal, state, and local law?
Yes.
Will you comply with all existing septic and well regulations of the Lee County Health Department?
We will.
What about the state of Illinois?
We will.
Will you maintain a point of contact with two secondary points of contact with the Lee County zoning administrator?
Yes.
And will you do the same with the Lee County Sheriff's Office?
Yes.
Will you carry liability insurance for this project?
We will.
Will that include limits of at least $5 million per occurrence in the aggregate?
Yes.
And $20 million in the aggregate, is that correct?
That's correct.
And will you maintain such insurance policies from the date you deliver a notice to proceed for this project?
Yes.
And do you commit to providing proof of this with the county upon commencement of construction and prior to the issuance of any building permit?
Yes.
Do you commit to updating this annually to the county?
Yes.
Will you name Lee County and its officers and employees as an additional insured on your general liability policy?
We will.
And will you do so both on a primary and non-contributory basis?
Yes.
And will you also name Lee County and its officers and employees as additional insured with a waiver of subrogation on your commercial liability policy?
We will.
And are you familiar with the other insurance requirements of the solar ordinance?
Yes.
And do you intend to follow and maintain all of the required insurance policies pursuant to that ordinance?
Yes.
I'm going to touch on a few, but it's not all-inclusive. The commercial auto policy of at least $1 million?
Yes.
What about the workers' compensation insurance policy?
Yes.
And the pollution liability insurance?
Yes.
This project, as proposed, is located within the mile and a half boundary surrounding both the villages of Stewart and Lee. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And have you communicated with either village regarding this project?
Yes, we've spoken with both the Village of Lee and the Village of Stewart and received resolutions authorizing and approving the construction, development, and operation of the Stewart Creek Solar Project within one and a half miles of the incorporated boundaries of each of those villages. As a part of that, we're also making additional voluntary contributions to those villages.
And if I recall your testimony correctly, you also agreed to farther setbacks in the use of certified dark sky lighting?
Yes. The setbacks will be in identified areas that the villages have flagged for potential economic expansion and growth, as well as road improvement plans, and the use of dark sky certified lighting.
Are you familiar with the hearing factors section of the solar ordinance?
Yes.
And what, if anything, can you tell me about this project's impact to the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare?
This project is going to be a very positive addition in that regard. It's going to provide a significant amount of annual tax revenue to the county, as well as local school districts, fire districts, roads, community college, as well as another, a number of other entities. Additionally, this project is going to not have hazardous materials or require a lot of chemicals to be used on-site. So, it gives the ground the ability to rest for a prolonged period of time. And ultimately, it's going to come back and be able to be used following decommissioning for continued agriculture. So, it's not a permanent change in the use of the land. It's something that allows for the participating landowners to lease their ground for a period of time, maintain ownership of that ground as we're leasing the properties. We're not purchasing the properties. So, it maintains its current ownership and can ultimately return back to its current condition.
And will this project generate short and long-term jobs?
Yes.
Will this project generate any noise?
It will not generate any noise above ambient noise levels at the property boundaries and will be in full compliance with the Lee County Solar Ordinance, Lee County Code, and the Illinois Pollution Control Board. There may be some noise during the construction of the facility, but it will be within those specified working hours that we had previously discussed from 7:00 AM to, to 5:00 PM.
And will that elevated noise during construction be temporary, or will that be permanent?
It will be temporary, yes. It will cease after construction. It will be primarily during the driving of piles.
What about vibrations? Will the project generate any type of vibration?
During normal operations and the long-term operation of the project, there won't be any vibrations, but there may be some vibrations that occur during construction, again, primarily during the driving of piles.
And again, the vibrations that'll be generated during construction of the project, will that be temporary?
Yes.
Will this project generate any shadow flicker onto adjacent properties?
It will not, no.
And will the project emanate any odor?
It will not.
What about electromagnetic frequencies?
It will generate electromagnetic frequencies typically at the inverter stations where it transfers the direct current generated by the panels into alternating current. Alternating current is what creates EMFs. Those EMFs are the exact same EMFs that are being generated from the lights above us right now. So, nothing above what we are normally exposed to every single day in our, in our lives.
And do you anticipate there to be any communication interference associated with this project?
No.
Will this project require any new public infrastructure?
It will not, no.
Is any glare anticipated for this project?
No, the, the panels are designed to absorb the light and eliminate glare using anti-reflective coatings.
And are there any airstrips or airports located in near proximity to this project?
There are. We prepared, or we've identified two, one at the, one at Rochelle and one just west of the Village of Stewart. We completed an FAA Notice Criteria Tool to determine whether or not this project would have any impact on those, on those airstrips, and we did not trigger any Notice Criteria requirements from the FAA.
And, and did you include the results from the FAA in Appendix M of your application materials?
We did, yes.
And I just want to be clear, of the two that you identified, are they both airports, or are they both airstrips, or one of each?
Rochelle is a, is a more robust airport, and the airstrip is what would be located west of the Village of Stewart.
Will this project negatively impact the environment, in your opinion?
No. It, it should be a benefit to the environment.
And what do you base that conclusion on?
I base that conclusion on not requiring the use of a significant amount of fertilizers every single year, allowing the ground to rest over a prolonged period of time, and then ultimately being able to return to agriculture. Additionally, we will utilize a pollinator seed mix beneath the panels that should help to increase the water retention of the soil, as well as reduce any erosion that might occur, and increase the organic matter content of the soil over the life of the project as well.
And are you anticipating that any tree clearing will be required for this project?
No.
What, if anything, can you tell me about the character of land within the project area?
It's predominantly agricultural, used for row cropping.
What, if anything, can you tell me about the character of the adjacent properties?
That's largely the same.
Is still primarily used for row crop production?
Yes.
And in your opinion, based on your experience in this industry, will the siding of this project prevent adjacent landowners from continuing to farm their land?
It will not, no.
And will it prevent other adjacent landowners from developing or improving their land?
It will not.
And why not?
Solar is really something that's located specifically in the properties on which they're installed. We don't have agreements with the adjacent neighbors that would restrict what they can and can't do with their ground. They can still do what they want. Solar doesn't have a broad impact in, in that way.
Will this project negatively impact the property values of surrounding properties?
It will not. We commissioned a third-party study to determine this. Additionally, coupled with the enhanced screening requirements that the Lee County ordinance requires of the project, there should not be any reduced property values that occur as a result of the installation of the project.
And I believe you previously testified that Cone Resnick, which is an appraisal firm, conducted that land value study. Is that right?
They did, yes.
And is that found in Appendix Q in your application materials?
Yes.
Now, you've previously, previously testified that this project will not require any new public infrastructure. Will you be constructing your own internal access roads?
We will be, yes.
And will that be at your sole cost and expense?
Yes.
What, if anything, can you tell me about the drainage work that you'll do for this project?
The drainage work that we're going to be doing is in, really designed to maintain all upstream and downstream flows and agreements that exist between the landowners currently. We're intending to coordinate and contract with Huddleston McBride and Tom Huddleston to map all of the existing subsurface drain tiles and surface drain tiles in order to craft our, our site design in a way to not have any impact on those tiles. In areas where we are in conflict with the drainage tile, we will repair, replace, and reroute that drain tile to ensure everything operates as it currently does in its current condition.
And, and what happens if a drain tile is struck during the construction process, or if it's discovered later in the operational phase?
If, if this occurs, we will immediately replace that drain tile to ensure that all the current flows are, are maintained.
Will that be a like-kind replacement or better?
Like-kind or better.
Tell me about the project's impact on local traffic conditions during the construction period.
This will be minimal. We expect about 15 to 20 trucks coming to the site in any given day. But once construction, or the delivery of materials specifically, once that ceases, traffic levels should go back to their normal level, and over the life of the project should actually see a reduction in traffic in the area, given that solar is extremely passive and doesn't require a significant number of vehicles on-site.
So, when you say trucks, what do you mean?
A, a typical flatbed for the delivery of materials. So, nothing that the roads aren't rated for.
And is it a fair statement that you anticipate maybe an increased truck, truck traffic flow during the construction phase of this project?
Yes.
But then, long-term effects, it should be, traffic should be reduced once the project reaches its operational phase?
Yes, that's correct.
Are you building any portion of this project in a floodplain?
We're not, no.
And this project proposes the use of a battery storage system as a supporting facility for this project. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Tell me a little bit about this proposed battery storage.
Yeah, so, these battery storage systems are really designed to help enhance the project even further. Solar produces a significant amount of its energy in the middle of the day, and people use their energy primarily at the start of the day and at the end of the day. So, this battery storage facility essentially allows for us to trim the peak generation of the facility and then disperse it on the shoulders so that there's a more level production of the facility over the course of the day. It's really an important component and supporting facility for these projects. It helps to make solar a much more dependable source of energy for us to use.
What type of batteries would be utilized?
Lithium ion is the technology that we're currently proposing to use.
And would those alone pose a risk to the danger or public at large?
They will not, no. We're taking increased setbacks for those facilities as well to mitigate any potential risk that could exist, though lithium ions, batteries are the same technologies that we find in our phones, in the batteries in the microphones that are in front of us now. So, they're very common and very well-known and understood.
How will those batteries be stored and kept?
They will be stored in containers that are temperature-controlled, so it'll look very similar to a storage container.
And will those storage and containers have any safety features?
Yes, they will, they will regulate the, the temperature of the, the batteries to ensure that they optimize in a, an ideal way and allow them to be as efficient as possible. They'll also have monitoring equipment so that we can see how much energy is going into the batteries and leaving the batteries at any given time, so that we can disperse the energy to the grid as it's needed.
And will those storage containers also contain fire suppression systems?
They will.
And what will those storage containers be situated on? Just the ground itself, or will there be like a platform of some sort?
They'll have a gravel buffer around them in addition to a concrete pad.
And I believe you touched on this, but, but these storage containers with the batteries, will those be remotely monitored?
They will, yes.
Will this be on a continuous basis?
Yes.
Now, you, you've proposed voluntary conditions for your battery energy storage in connection with this project. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And why did you do that?
So, as it currently stands, battery energy storage systems are defined in the Lee County Solar Ordinance as a supporting facility. However, given that there are no battery-specific regulations that exist, we went above and beyond what was required of us. So, we looked to adjacent counties like DeKalb to see what ordinances and regulations they have in place for battery systems, and voluntarily adhered to those in order to further enhance the safety, efficiency, and design of the battery storage supporting facility component for Stewart Creek Solar. of the battery storage supporting facility component for Stewart Creek Solar.
And these are conditions that you are asking this zoning board of appeals to set for this project?
Yes.
And are those found in Section 6.0 in your special use permit application narrative?
They are.
Mr. Facilitator, I have one more exhibit I'd like to introduce my pass it out.
Exhibit five.
Yes, please. Okay. Mr. Hansman, are you familiar with what I just handed you?
I am, yes.
Okay, and what is this?
This is a set of slides and information to focus on the economic benefits that the Stewart Creek Solar project is going to provide to Lee County, as well as local and community stakeholders.
And is it a fair statement that this document or slide deck is also pulled up on the screen here today?
Yes.
Okay. Did you personally prepare this?
I did.
And did you prepare it in anticipation of tonight's hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Please briefly go through your slide deck.
Yeah, so to start, I guess we can shift through past the cover page and then the section title here to the first slide, which goes into a detailed analysis of the tax revenue that both Phase One and Phase Two combined will bring to Lee County, as well as the other beneficiaries of the tax revenue for the project. It's a fair statement to say that Phase Two will bring approximately half of this as Illinois Tax Code assesses solar projects based on the capacity. So, each phase being 600 megawatts will bring in the same amount of tax revenue, regardless of the amount of acreage that may comprise. So, over the 35-year project life that we have lease agreements for, it's estimated to bring in approximately $174 million in tax revenue to Lee County, which would be, as we've estimated, $167, nearly $168 million more than what would have otherwise been generated if it stayed in agricultural use. A more detailed rundown looks at specific recipients of those funds. The vast majority is going to be going to local schools, nearly $116 million of it. We had a meeting with Stewart Elementary School in advance of this hearing, and they offered a resolution of support for the project because of these significant benefits that will be provided. Another $20 million to the county. $14.2 million will go to the local Kishawaki Community College. $5.9 million to the townships of Willow, Creek, and Alto. $9 million to the local fire districts, and $9.1 million to the road districts.
Mr. Hansman, I want to stop you right there, if I may. Now, you previously testified to the villages of Stewart and the village of Lee. Will they stand to receive anything from property tax revenue?
They will not, no. So, there's a slide that's a little bit later on that discusses the specific steps that we've taken to help to address this. In light of the fact that the villages won't receive any tax revenue, we wanted to make contributions to them because the way that the villages would have received money is if these solar panels were located within their incorporated boundaries. Since they're not, they would not stand to gain anything monetarily from the Stewart Creek Solar project.
Please proceed.
Yes. Additionally, we expect to create approximately 700 temporary jobs over the life of the project, specifically during the construction phase. And we are aiming, and our objective is to utilize local labor in order to meet those significant labor requirements to construct this facility. However, over the life of the project, we expect the creation of about 15 to 20 full-time jobs to oversee the operations and maintenance, again utilizing local crews to help maintain the facility.
And I know you've noted that 700 construction jobs created, but will that mean that 700 people will be on-site at any given time during construction?
No, no, it does not. We only expect about 50, maybe more, folks to be on-site at any given time, given what phase of the project we're in. There are some phases of construction that are significantly more labor-intensive, such as driving piles, installing the racking system, and putting the modules on the panels themselves, or on the racking system itself. And last part of this is the other benefit that these additional temporary construction crews provide are significant amounts of patronage to local businesses, restaurants, hotels, and other entities. And the next slide just shows a graph of Phase Two's annual tax contributions. This is indicative, the annual contributions will change year-over-year based on the inflation rate that's identified by the state of Illinois, as well as the allowable depreciation for the facility itself. But as we can see, there is a very significant increase in tax contribution on an annual basis that is generated from solar when compared to its current use. High-level numbers, I think that the total is the most significant. And in some of the, well, really, it's just a sliver in many of the cases. You can barely see the current tax contribution when compared to what solar stands to provide the local community. And the final slide that we have, this talks about the community funds that we are going to be engaging with the villages on. As a part of Phase One, we committed to making annual payments of $25,000 per year to the villages for their own discretionary use. For Phase Two, since we were able to really take steps to optimizing the site by filling in the gaps, as it were, that existed within the array, we have the ability to optimize our site layout. And this is allowing for us to make additional contributions to the tune of $85,000 per year, escalating at 2.5% to the villages over the life and operation of the project, which will bring in about, for Phase Two, $4.7 million to each of the villages over the project life. Additionally, in the context of these PJM delays that Scott Reamer had discussed, we've actually begun to make annual payments to the tune of $35,000 per year during the development phase of the project so that the villages can start to make some improvements that they've identified and want to identify. And so, we've taken that step as well.
So, using that same scenario that I used with Mr. Reamer, so if this project, let's say it does obtain its special use permit from the county, but later on, something falls through and it's not feasible for that project to be built, what happens to those payments that you've made to both villages?
Both of the villages will retain all of those payments that have been previously made.
And the payments that you've made already and the payments that you're talking about and as listed on this slide, are those tied to any village action? Meaning, did you make those payments in expectation for the village to do anything?
No, no. They're not made as a condition of our resolutions. These are made to benefit the local community. We, as the developer, also do not have any say in how the villages utilize these funds.
Do you have anything else you'd like to add on this slide?
Oh, no, that would pretty much cover the slide decks.
And Mr. Facilitator, I'd like to move for entry of petitioner's Exhibit Five into evidence for demonstrative purposes.
Any objections to the members of the zoning board?
No.
Zoning administrator? County?
No.
Any objections from interested observers? It'll be admitted.
Thank you. Mr. Hansman, do you have anything else you'd like to add about the project itself?
No, really, just wanted to say that I appreciate everyone's time. It's been, obviously, a pleasure and a mainstay of my time at Hexagon to be working in Lee County. And time and time again, Lee County has shown itself to be enviable among my colleagues. It's amazing what process that you all run, and really helps to make the developer's life easier. And this structure provides us a great opportunity to present all of this information to you all and to show the steps that we've taken to really create what we see as a best-in-class project.
I have nothing further.
Do members of the zoning board have any questions for this witness?
You said the build time would be 20 to 24 months. Is that Phase Two or both phases simultaneously?
We expect to be able to start both phases simultaneously. There are some efficiencies that we're able to realize if we commence construction on both phases at the same time, but it will increase it slightly. So, each phase individually, about 20 to 24 months together, probably in the tune of 30 to 36.
When will the drainage survey begin? Will you lead the other portions with that, or?
That will be done in advance of any building permit application. So, we'll coordinate, and we've had initial discussions with Tom Huddleston about him performing to identify and locate all subsurface drain tile, not just so that we could avoid it during construction, but also to identify any tiles that are in need of repair in advance of beginning construction because it is certainly easier for us to address any degrading drain tile ahead of beginning construction instead of after construction has been completed.
Okay, no other questions?
Other questions?
Yeah, yes. Couple of questions, and talking about the drainage tile then. What's the distance between the north-south rows that these are going to be sited in and the distance between the posts that are going to support these?
So, the distances can vary based on the topography of the ground. There are some tolerances that the racking systems have so that we can move the foundations so that if any drain tiles are identified, we can attempt to miss them, as it were. However, the area that is beneath the panels themselves, it's generally about 33% of the overall area. And those are then mounted on steel-driven I-beams that are significantly smaller in area. So, in instances, because drain tiles are not always pattern-drained tiled, it's not always a guarantee that we can avoid them, certainly for some tile installations that are 50 to 100 years old. We will have to reroute those tile locations and replace them or improve upon them.
So, how far apart will these multiple rows be, then, the north-south rows?
I don't have a specific figure on that right now until the site is ultimately done.
Okay. Does this electricity sell for premium then, since it's a no-carbon-type electricity?
We can receive additional renewable energy credits from the energy generated from this facility. However, we still have to compete in a competitive solicitation to sell this power to any off-taker who is interested in buying it. There's definitely an advantage for them instead of purchasing electricity at spot-market prices day-over-day to contract with a project like Stewart Creek Solar to buy a significant amount of energy that can be used over 20 or 25 years so they know exactly how much energy they're going to receive from the project and exactly how much they're going to pay for that power.
A couple of things on the battery storage systems, since this is something new to the county. You said you have a temperature-regulating facility for the lithium batteries. Does that mean you're also going to have heat for the winter time so that they produce more, like the car problems we had this winter?
Yeah. If you've seen some of the images where batteries don't really like to be too hot, they don't like to be too cold, they really want to be just in the middle at an operating temperature. So, those facilities will maintain that, both from an air conditioning perspective as well as a heating perspective as necessary.
What type of the other thing that's developed in the last few years is the fire situation with some of the cars and batteries? What type of suppression thing, just in general? How does this keep a fire down in the lithium batteries? What do they use?
Yeah, so what they're able to use, and this is the important component of the remote monitoring equipment that exists, as well as the monitoring equipment that's within the containers themselves, is the ability to identify if there is a potential issue. If that were to occur, they can disperse and actually cut off power to the facility to prevent anything from escalating. But any suppression would utilize an inert gas in order to fully suppress and smother a potential fire.
Okay, and that's something that basically the fire departments cannot use anything like, in that nature then, when they battle these fires, apparently.
It would be incorporated within the storage container or the storage of the battery itself so that they can be isolated, and the fire crews wouldn't have to get close to the batteries itself to fight any of that blaze.
That's all I have, thank you.
Any questions from the zoning administrator?
Yes. Did Phase Two of the project consult with the Illinois State Historic Preservation Office?
We did, yes.
Okay. With regard to the battery storage, how many containers will there be housing the lithium-ion batteries?
Off the top of my head, I'm not entirely sure. It can depend on what type of system we use, whether it's an AC or a DC coupled system.
Will the containers be configured in one single location, or are they spread out throughout the project?
Again, it can depend on the ultimate system design. However, right now, we're planning to have those located directly adjacent to the substation and air connection facilities.
What kind of setbacks are you proposing?
We're going to have 200-foot setbacks proposed to the property lines for the battery storage systems, but they will also have a gravel and rock buffer area so that there will not be any vegetation that's close to the battery systems.
Does Hexagon or Stewart Creek Solar commit to repair or pay to have repaired all damage to any drainage system caused by construction of the facility within a reasonable time period following construction?
Yes.
I have nothing further.
County?
We have nothing.
I have one question, if I may. With regard to your conversations with the fire protection districts, did you request, solicit, obtain any letters or comments from them on recommendations they have that you're going to incorporate?
The fire protection plan that we had drafted as a part of Phase One sought their input and comments, which we incorporated as part of that application, and we're going to adhere to those same standards. However, once, as we continue to progress, we will have a final emergency and safety plan that seeks their input as well, and so we will do that ahead of a building permit.
And as part of that process, do you intend to get letters of, I don't know if I quite call them letters of support, but letters of acknowledgement, understanding, if they don't have any further concerns?
It will pursue it in a way that's similar, almost to a road use agreement, where we will present the project and then seek their input if there are any concerns that they have or things that they want to have addressed, whether it's a site walk even during the construction period of the project because of varying conditions that occur. Preliminary construction looks different than active construction, which then can look different in operations. So, we want to provide them as many opportunities to evaluate the site as they deem necessary.
Were there any concerns from Hexagon or Stewart Creek LLC that the fire protection district that you're talking about is a fairly small rural fire protection district?
Yes. The tax revenue will certainly help to bolster it over the long term. And as we had also testified to, all of the training, all of the walkthroughs, we will supplement and provide at our cost.
Okay, questions from interested observers? Carl? David? Lynn? And I thank you for allowing me to be informo. I didn't get all of your last names written down, so. John?
I have some.
You said you didn't know the location of the battery storage facility? Is it a facility or is it a bunch of storage containers stuck together on a cement pad?
It would be a bunch of storage containers, so they're brought in as independent units.
Okay. And you said there's no hazardous material on the site, but would the batteries, that amount of batteries be considered hazardous?
Lithium-ion on their own are not considered a heavy metal, but we will not be seeing those as like storage of hazardous waste. But those will be properly adhered to as a material and will follow all applicable safety and safety standards for those facilities.
Okay, and being you guys are like a small company, I know he kept saying that, and I forgot to ask that the last time, I don't know if you could answer this. What happens when you get halfway through the project and you're a small company and you just kind of run out of money or run out of, you know, and can't finish?
Yeah. So, prior to beginning construction, and that's something that Mr. Reamer had also discussed. also discussed a little bit, is we're going to be partnering with a large financier for the project to help guarantee the conditions that we are discussing today and what we're going to adhere to in all the terms of the Lee County Solar Ordinance and applicable regulations. Before beginning construction as well, obviously no one gets into a construction projects, makes the approximately one and a half billion dollars in an initial investment that we foresee as potentially being needed for this project without the desire of having that be recouped during the electrical generation of the site. However, with that said, the decommissioning plan that we had provided and the cost estimates for decommissioning contained within it will help to determine what level of security we're required to pose to guarantee the removal and restoration of the property and the facility. So if we are in default of the ordinance, in default of the special use permit and run out of money, that bond and that financial security is.
Okay, so there's a bond, okay. You don't need a special like building permit for this battery that you're trying to, that this is going in with this other permit, the battery storage? I was just wondering, you didn't do it on the first phase and the second phase is smaller, but you're adding the battery storage on the second phase?
The first phase had a supporting facility for storage as well. This has the same, though we this time around are identifying additional standards and regulations that we're going to be voluntarily adhering to for both phases of the project.
You had a battery storage on the first phase?
We did, yes. It was included in the manufacturing specs in that application.
Okay. And then the substation, is that a, just like a regular electrical substation, pretty much like the ones you see, the ComEd ones or the one for the wind farm that's over there, kind of like that?
Yeah, the closest example would be the substation located on Paw Paw Road, just a little bit further.
Okay.
So it'll look very similar to that, comparable size as well.
Okay.
Right, Terry?
I just have a couple of questions regarding the battery storage. You said that they have to be temperature controlled and so the battery storage, is it going to be near any homes?
It will not, no. It'll be located near the substation is what we currently have planned, which is very far from homes, but we're also going to be at least 200 feet from any property line.
Because the reason I'm asking is that you're going to have, you know, temperature controlled and are you planning on like a heat pump or what is the, what kind of, what kind of hum will we hear? That's my concern because as you know, I'm kind of a nature person and.
Yeah.
The night sky is beautiful out in Lee and also sometimes the silence. He had someone come out today and said, oh my God, it's so silent. Are we going to hear a constant hum?
No, absolutely not. So these facilities are required in the same way as the solar project as a whole to be in full compliance with the Illinois Pollution Control Board for noise. So in the area and class of land that we're going to be situated on, it's still going to be agricultural in nature and we have to meet those decibel requirements for the project. So the noise analysis also determined that there will not be any noise above ambient that occurs because of these facilities at the property line. So it shouldn't result in any audible hum.
Okay, and then EMF, I think I asked you guys before, is the only EMF coming off the inverters, is that where it's coming from?
It'll be at the locations wherever there's alternating current, so that's ultimately how EMFs are generated is they will be in our light fixtures, they will be in the wires that are in the rooms surrounding us currently. So EMFs are all around us and are in large thanks to Thomas Edison. So if Nikola Tesla had had his way, we wouldn't have EMFs, but Thomas Edison won out, so they're all around us, but they don't pose any.
Well, how far do they travel though? I think my question is, you know, because we're bombarded as it is, the cumulative effects and everything, and I'm just curious, how far does it travel?
They shouldn't travel beyond the bounds of the property or the bounds of the project.
Okay. The fencing around, I know we talked for Phase One about wildlife corridors, are the wildlife able to get through without having, getting stuck in a fence or being caught? Let's say a rabbit gets in and he can't get his way, you know?
Yeah.
Is there a way that these animals can travel from one area to another because they migrate normally?
Yeah, so we're in the same way as Phase One, going to maintain primary wildlife corridors to allow for the passage of animals.
You will allow the passage.
So we don't want to corral them into roadways or anything like that.
That was my fear, yeah.
So we really want to maintain natural areas and not change the landscape to prevent or alter their migration too much.
Road dust, I don't think anyone mentioned the fact that probably the biggest thing during construction, it's going to be, you know, noisy and I get it, but the road dust in the summertime when you have construction, are you guys going to, is there something that can be put on the roads to stop that dust because our houses will be filled with it?
Yeah, so we are still going to be required to comply with the terms of the AMA as they pertain to construction. So they discuss dust provisions and there are county construction requirements that we have to adhere to as well. I can't speak specifically to whether or not there is a different type of aggregate that we would be placing on the road to reduce that dust from.
Well, there's some sort of fluid I know that you can put on, but I don't know what it is.
And ideally, we're going to be targeting blacktop, it's better for us. However, we'll flesh out all this more formally in a road use agreement with the townships and the county ahead of construction, but ultimately adhering to, as a matter of certainty, all rules and regulations that pertain to dust.
And will there be someone we can call if they're, because it never fails if something goes wrong or, you know, someone forgets to do anything, something like, let's just say they forget to put their sealed fencing in, you ask them and they go, oh, we're not worried about it. You know, is it, who do we call or how do we reach?
Yeah.
Do we call you guys?
The county is probably going to be your best bet who would then have a construction contact that they're able to reach out to for the site to make sure that all the rules and regulations are being followed. We're going to be committing to those official stormwater management plans for the site, so if there ever is a violation or breach of that, it would be a breach of the conditions or permits that we would be responsible to address and resolve.
Well, you know, rather than calling like the EPA, I'd rather call one of you guys or, you know, just to say, hey, there's something just not quite right and I know it's not, you guys know that it's not supposed to, but you don't know what's not going on.
Yeah.
You know, and so that's what my concern is, do I just call the county and?
Yeah, we'll have contacts posted with the county for everyone to reach out to if there are any issues that are perceived.
And I think that's it except for one last thing, the seed mix that you're going to put on, you're going to do a high quality and possibly use a local landscape architect for natural native plantings.
Yes, our seed mix that we had initially proposed was developed in consultation with NCAP, so we had a preliminary seed mix which we sought their feedback on and they made some select changes to that mix to ensure that it was natural, local, but also not going to have a root structure that would present any potential issues to drainage tile. So we want to have something that is a local pollinator-friendly seed mix for the site.
And the other thing I do want to tell you is that, you know, rain gardens are, the whole purpose of those plants are, they go sometimes, you know, 12 feet deep, they will suck the water, I don't think they get into the drain tiles as much as they will suck that water up and help you, you know, mitigate a lot of that.
Yeah, we expect the water retention of this soil to be greatly improved, given that it's going to be in a stable ground cover seed mix over the life of the project and wouldn't go through the constant phases of planting, harvest, and that cycle will be much more stable in long-term and there wouldn't be as much annual variation.
Well, because I have a native prairie in my backyard and I can sit and I can, actually I have a chair in the center of it, and you can just hear the bees, you won't believe what comes in and it would be nice if we could have the bees and, you know, the monarchs and things come back. So I'm looking forward to that. You know, if you can let me know even what kind of mixture you're using if there's.
Yeah, absolutely. As a part of our official plan, we're going to consult with local experts. We really pride ourselves in finding people who know much more than we do and then seeking their expertise to improve our project and make it as best suited for a local community as possible.
Yeah, we're from Illinois, it's a whole different, you know, the native plants are totally different than what you would have in Virginia and, yeah, because I mean, I've lived it for so long, so if you need any help at all or anything, I'll be happy to help you guys with, you know, finding the mixtures and the plants that would be appropriate.
Absolutely, I mean, that would be fantastic and we greatly appreciate your offer to help and obviously continued discussions over the years of the project since we first met with Phase One as well, so.
I'm looking forward to butterflies and bees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions, please?
Will this battery storage system proposed in Phase Two be connected to Phase One?
That's possible, yes. Ultimately, we want to have a single system, a 1.2 gigawatt system that coexists with itself, though as Scott had mentioned in his testimony, unfortunately, nothing is guaranteed. We do our best to plan, but if the Phase One system or if Phase One is the only piece that's able to go forward, we wouldn't have the Phase Two system.
Concerning the lithium-ion batteries, how many are in this facility?
That I wouldn't have a specific number on, though we know that it would be a 100-megawatt facility, but the individual battery cell count, I don't have that figure off the top of my head.
What is the lifespan of a lithium, one of these lithium-ion batteries?
The efficiency will decrease over time and fortunately, since they're in these shipping containers, as they degrade and lose their efficiency and reach the end of their life, we're able to replace them as needed.
And do you have a number of years that that might be?
They can vary based on what producer it is and then also how often they are charged and discharged. As if you were to, for example, charge your phone to 100% and drop it to zero every single day, that battery is going to last significantly shorter than if you had kept it around 80% and not drained the battery every day. So there's a high amount of variability depending on how often they're charged and discharged.
Is there a place that you can get rid of these lithium-ion batteries?
Yes, there are a number of companies that are coming out now to help recycle these batteries and discharge them. We wouldn't landfill them, we would dispose of them in the appropriate and responsible way.
Who pays the property taxes on a participating landowner that, when you lease the land?
That would be the project.
The, pardon?
The solar project would pay those property taxes.
Would the property tax rate be lower then for them?
So the underlying property tax would be, and I'm not a tax expert, Wendy Ryerson would probably know better than I do, however, the underlying property tax, the way that the state of Illinois has assessed these projects, takes into account the real and personal property of the solar array and the increased value that results from the installation of the solar array. So we're responsible for paying all those taxes, the landowners won't realize any increased property taxes as a result of this being installed.
Okay, thank you.
And online, we had MGV questions?
Not at the moment, thank you.
Let me say, no question.
Mr. Facilitator, I've got a point of clarification. We've done a lot of discussion about this battery. Did anybody ever mention what the location of this battery system would be?
Yeah, we've, in the site plan, we've currently modeled for it to be located in the same space as the substation and interconnection facility south of Cowan Road.
Mr. Kennedy, any questions based on those that have occurred since you presented?
No, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we are at the two and a half hour mark for your, under your rules. How do you wish to proceed?
We need to find.
We have a second date on the calendar for the 28th?
There is a possibility that we might need a third night. Do you want to try to pin that down while we're all here?
That would probably be a wise move.
If it helps things, Mr. Facilitator, I believe we would rest after Mr. Hansman's testimony, so if that helps us predict future dates or how much time is needed.
Probably from a public hearing standpoint, the 28th will be able to finish. I think the chairman's probably asking me about the date to meet with the zoning board in public to go through findings, if I'm correct, Mr. Chairman.
Right. So your third optional date?
I would like to start with your availability. You have the freakiest schedule.
March 6th, staying on Tuesdays, Wednesdays?
I am available. You, Jonathan?
I'm available.
I don't think the petitioners are.
That does not work for me, I'm sorry.
Nope, that's fine.
13th? And again, the 13th, the third date is most likely meeting with the zoning board to go through findings, so certainly would understand that if all of the applicant, petitioner individuals are not present.
That works for us.
13th?
Works for you, works for me.
It doesn't work for me either, unfortunately. You had thrown out a date before on the 7th?
So that is a regular hearing night. We have two petitions up that night.
I thought we would recess. I'm going to be out the 6th through the 11th.
20th?
The what?
March 20th.
That'll work for me.
Yeah, most importantly, Kelly.
You know, Mr. Facilitator, not that I'm trying to make it painful, but if I could appear by Zoom, we could make March 6th work. I don't have any role in the actual findings of fact, I'd like to tune in to them, but if that wouldn't be an issue, we can make that work.
Certainly don't have any objection to that as long as the zoning board members don't. Oh, I'm sure we could make that work.
Okay.
6th.
What date?
6th.
March 6th? Yep, that'll work.
That's right. Wednesday. 6 o'clock? Okay, so we remain set for the 28th to complete the public hearing. During that portion of the public hearing, petitioner will be given the opportunity to present any further witnesses they may have, any closing statement or argument they have. I'm sorry, that's right. Any closing statement or argument they have, same for the county, if they have any comments at that time. Anyone who's an interested observer may also make public comments for or against the project at that time. And once that's all concluded, we'll close the public hearing portion and proceed to simply the issues on findings. Any questions on that process?
I have one just to be a pain in the rear end. I think we could wrap it up. I mean, I don't know if any interested parties plan to present evidence tonight, I'm certainly not intending to put anybody on the spot, but it is possible that we could wrap this up within the next half hour, but I don't know. I know the board rules are two and a half hours, so I would leave that up to the board as a suggestion.
I guess my concern would be we have enough people that are interested observers and I wish to respect that they have an opportunity to speak and offer any comments they have. They've all been very respectful and kind this evening and I want to make sure I honor that they have the opportunity to say what they want to say, and so I hate to try to squeeze in the last few minutes to like make that happen.
Okay.
I agree.
So we will now stand in recess till the 20, well, are you done with this witness? I'm sorry.
Yes, I am.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that the zoning board stand in recess till the 28th at 6:00.
Okay.
Need a motion?
You want to make a motion?
I move recess till February 28th, 6:00 PM.
We have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second?
Aye.
Very good.
Aye.
Aye, I catch all quick.
Aye. All in favor?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.